Let us pray. And to the Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us.
Thank you.
We pray that you watch over us and guide us as we proceed with today's meeting. We pray that the decisions we make and the actions we take will be beneficial to the citizens of our city. If we should stray or go amiss, we ask for your forgiveness. We ask these in all things in Jesus' name, I mean.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty just for all. Amen.
Again, good afternoon, council. Uh, to my knowledge, the agenda would go as printed. There is no further chair entertaining motion to adopt the working agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion been made and been second, any further, all in favor, right hand. Pose the same sign, motion care. Next, we had a presentation on them. Mayor, you got anything, a report today?
Yes, um, this is a precursor of the mayor's report that was given last, um, board meeting. Uh, it wasn't presented. Uh, the sales tax allocation, um, our sales tax allocation for the month of June twenty twenty five was four hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. Uh, this is a decrease of fifty two thousand, four hundred and fourteen or eleven, eleven percent of the June twenty twenty four allocation. For this fiscal year, we have collected, um, three thousand.
Three million four million.
No, they put a period, that's right. Uh, three million, nine hundred and forty seven, uh, thousand, fifty nine dollars, a decrease of, uh, one, one hundred and sixty eight thousand, one hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty seven cents, which is a four percent less than the tax allocation of the year beginning October, uh, one, twenty twenty three. Our sale tax allocation for the month of July twenty twenty five was four hundred and sixty five thousand, nine hundred and forty two. Uh, this is an increase of thirty eight thousand, eight dollars or seven point three six percent of the July twenty twenty four allocation. Uh, for the fiscal year, we have collected, um, four million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, one dollar, uh, a decrease of a hundred and thirty six thousand, one hundred and sixteen, which is three percent less than the tax allocation for the year beginning August one, twenty twenty three. Uh, city clerk, city clerk position. Our resume was submitted to the city of clerk. I was the first, um, with other potential department heads appointment, and again, I was twenty nine. Currently, we are out, uh, without a city clerk. The interim, uh, city clerk who opted not to apply for the position would be out for extended period of time to, uh, with medical leave. Um, so, uh, so there's where we at with the city clerk. I have a couple of questions for Attorney Brock, if you're okay with you and Mr. Brock.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I received two resolutions, um, from you. Uh, one regarding the appointment, um, let's say, um, number three, under our routine agenda.
Yes, sir.
Um, was that given by the mayor?
Uh, you're talking about the, to authorize bonding of acting police chief?
As well as acting police chief.
Uh, at the last meeting when you were ill, that was on the agenda to approve, and the council wanted a resolution.
Okay, so he was never considered as the acting police chief. There was concern about a acting police, uh, public works. That was, this came in the question, correct? Last board meeting, where the budget agreement was tabled due to someone signing as the acting, uh, public works, correct?
Well, are you asking why this resolution is on the?
Right, so how can they have a resolution to add a acting police chief when we don't have?
Yeah, I think what he's saying, Attorney, is the resolution saying acting police chief, and Chief King is not acting police chief, that's the wording of that, right? And so the wording should be different, right?
So, but that co- that should have been a conversation with the mayor prior to that, right?
Okay, well, I apologize.
No, 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 it's, it's not you. So that means there was a conversation that had to be had that over seeded the mayor, right? For that resolution to come, come across.
Well, the, the item was on the agenda.
Right.
At the city council meeting two weeks ago, or whenever it was, and I assume that came from you.
No, it didn't.
Who would place that on the agenda?
That's very good question.
Okay.
Well, what I, what I'm thinking is basically was only trying to put Chief King on a account of something. What, what was it, Vicki?
Yes, it's just, it's just to get him on the count.
So, wait, that's a conversation that should have been had with the mayor prior to it. Although that I'm on the count, you're on the count, as well as Ms. Oswald. So, whatever, uh, the penalty, I know that I'm on, right?
I don't even know if you're on that one.
Okay, so even with that, that conversation should have been had prior to it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, um, so, uh, it seems like we're having a, a issue with who does what. So, it seems like we're having a problem with, um, separation of power. Uh, we, we work in a mayor council, a former government, correct?
That is accurate.
And it's broken down into separate entities where it's legislative and executive, correct?
Hmm.
All right, so it says, it states that the legislative power, um, doesn't legislate, have legislative power and not executive. So that means when you appoint, appointing something, that falls in the hands of the mayor, correct?
You have appointing power, absolutely.
So that means that when we speak of governing the city, day to day operations, it does not fall to the hand of the, uh, the city council.
Day to day operations, by and large, is in the hands of the mayor.
Yes, sir. All right, so, um, you sent a memo, uh, with many of the, uh, state statutes. And we have a situation where ex, I, I provided an excerpt of Jordan versus Smith. I gave it to, uh, city councilman, um, Ms. Glenn, and she gave it to city councilman Steve since the last board. Um, the first, uh,
I didn't give it to him, I had it myself.
Okay.
I didn't give it to nobody.
My apologies, my apologies.
Okay.
Okay, um, so Mississippi Code, uh, twenty eight dash nine vested city council of the, uh, Greenwood with the right to exercise legislative power and but not executive power. The council cannot successfully argue that the general, uh, provision of section twenty one fifteen twenty five and section twenty one three, twenty three, uh, twenty one dash twenty three dash three, uh, gives the power to appoint the city attorney, city judge, or, uh, city prosecutor. It goes on with twenty one dash eight dash twenty seven, the member of the council shall not direct or dictate, excuse what I'm talking about. Right? Um, the council shall not direct or dictate the appointment of any person, uh, to his, to his, to his removal from a office by the mayor or any department, uh, director. So that means the council shall deal with the municipal department and personnel solely through the mayor. So that means that everything transpired, and where the city council have an issue, even with council, they should go through me to speak to either the department head or even to league council, correct?
Repeat that.
All right, so it states, the council shall, uh, deal with the municipal departments and personnel solely through the mayor, and no member of the council shall give orders or any subordinates to the municipal.
Oh, yeah, that's right. If, if a council wants to, uh, talk to a city employee or department, then you go through.
Okay. All right, so, uh, Mississippi Code, uh, state statute twenty one dash fifteen dash twenty five and twenty three dash, twenty one dash twenty three dash three, uh, the government authorities entitled the appointment of city attorney, city judge, uh, et cetera, um, is solely through the mayor. Now, it also states that the city council do not have the right to advice and consent, could you elaborate on that?
As it, as far as it goes to discussing with an employee?
No, with even appointees, so it states that.
Right, well, you, you don't have to read it. It's up to you to nominate, it's up to the city council to vote up.
Up or down.
And that's it.
So.
They can't dictate who's appointed.
Right.
Um, all they can do is confirm or not confirm.
So when statements, like, so the board speaks through its minutes, correct?
Yes, sir.
So if the board does not appoint or vote up or down, that person can be brought up multiple times until a, a reason, uh, decision is made, correct?
The statute that you're talking about, um, says basically that if the council rejects, and then there's a, 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 a part of that sentence after that, that I can't find where the attorney general's ever given an opinion, but it says whether the city council, or if the city council rejects or otherwise fails to convert, confirm a nomination of the mayor, they cannot be brought up again.
So you were referring to.
And so that could be interpreted as failing of lack of a second, you know, parliamentary procedure. Uh, a resolution failing for lack of a second to move forward falls into the category where otherwise fails to confirm. Um, but I don't think it's ever been ruled on by the city council, I mean, by the attorney general's office.
Um, but it also states that the city council cannot block, uh, appointment arbitrarily. Is exercise executive, uh, power, it does not have, which, um, courts views as abuse of legislative, uh, authority. So it means that if a nomination comes up, they have the right to vote up or down. If they do, they have to give good, uh, good cause as to why they, uh, they vote up or down, correct?
Um, I think they need to have good cause. I don't believe that the statute requires that the council gives like a narrative of, of the reason why they vote the way they do.
So when it states good cause, it has, it cannot be interfered with, whether it's arbitrary, which means personal feelings.
I would, I would agree with that.
So it means that when a person is brought up, whether if there was unsuccessful, um, due to a elected position, that should not disqualify a person for a municipal position, correct?
Yeah, I'm not aware of anybody that's been nominated that's been disqualified before. Uh, this, this is a odd conversation to have at a city council meeting, um, and I, I think.
The reason why we're having this.
Conversation, I, I'm happy to have with you.
See, the reason why we're having this conversation because last board meeting, there are certain statements that were said, that was inaccurate. Um, councilman said that I'm trying to circumvent the rules, um, bringing up a, a qualified candidate that was not, was unsuccessful in obtaining a elected position. Although that person had may or may not have been elected, it does not disqualify them from having that position. Um, there was another statement that would say, I don't understand why this continued, uh, this certain name is being brought up. Um, the board works, I mean, the board operates through its minutes, so that means you had to vote up or down. It also states that you can't undo the, they can't, the board can't stop a appointment. If you vote up or down, am I, correct me if I'm wrong?
That is right.
So that means that they just can't just sit and not do nothing. So, I'm actually delivered to provide something. Um, this led us to provide a clarification regarding the respective roles of the mayor and city council in the appointment of department heads and employees, as well as the, uh, position of facility manager. Pursuant to Mississippi Code twenty one dash eight dash twenty three, the mayor is designated as the exec, uh, chief executive officer of the city and is vested with the responsibility for the administration of our city department, offices, and agency. The statute future, um, the statute further grants the mayor the power to appoint and remove department heads and employees, except as otherwise provided by law. The city council role is in the process is limited to the confirmation of appointees as required by state, by statute. In Portland, the Mississippi Supreme Court has held that the council confirmation authority is not unlimited. As stated in the majority opinion, it, uh, in, interpreting twenty one dash eight dash twenty three, confirmation should not be unduly withheld and may not be withheld on the basis of good cause. In other words, rejection of a mayor appointment must be based on legitimate substantial reasons such as demonstrating lack of qualification or conflict of interest, not in arbitrary or political grounds. The principles of the separation of power in the mayor, in the mayor council form of government ensures that the mayor retains executive authority to administrate city operations while the city provides legislative oversight. I repeat, while the, the council provides legislative oversight. When confirmation is unduly withheld or delayed without good cause, the balance of power is undermined and the effective functioning of city government is, uh, obstructed. According to the appointment of department heads, league council, community, uh, board appointees, as well as facility manager or employee, or employees, rests with the mayor. The city council may exercise its confirmation authority, but may not directly appoint, supervise, or assume control over executive function. At this time, I will exercise the mayor veto power of appoint said name as the facility manager of the car center due to the violation of Mississippi Code twenty one dash eight dash twenty three, as well as the appointment of an acting police chief and authorizing him as designer for the public, uh, petty cash account. Answers from the Jordan, uh, B. Smith, and a Mississippi Attorney General option will accompany this letter to provide additional information on separation of power. Thank you for your attention. It is an important matter, uh, for our community to withhold both the law and the integrity of the municipal government. We've danced around for almost two months now. Um, and they're withholding appointees. I, I would provide each council with this letter as well as additional information. Thank you.
President, I'm questioning.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what he read?
I read that, and then my understanding of that, no one can do, vote against something that with malice, with discontent, something like that. However, you can vote up or down easily. I mean, uh, you can vote up or down, and the reason I did give it. Now, appointees, appointees, right, can be relieved, I'm used to saying words, fired, who knows, no reason, no excuse at all. Party can be voted up or down without counsel, given a reason, as long as they're not biased, as long as they're not political. Uh, basically what he just read, that's what he said. And so therefore, the city council knows, well, I'm one that know the executive branch and legislative branch are totally different. We legislated, have to go through the mayor to get anything done in the community. But there are certain things that the mayor had to see city council getting done, and they were. But however, but, unless they have no control over the employee whatsoever, and it cannot motivate, I mean, make the employee do anything without the mayor permission. So, in the middle of the future, in the past, have given us permission to talk to the department heads and buy some thing, but we cannot control or they work for us. But when they want something done, we just go to, so probably with the great mayor permission, like in the past, or go to the mayor. So now, new mayor, naturally, we got to go through the mayor here, if they're doing it, in the most case, so, uh, but, uh, my understanding is not intent for the city council to do executive work. That's my understanding, and so.
So, based on what you're saying, the name that was, uh, was brought up for a city attorney was struck down without good cause.
I want him on there, period.
I would like to tell you, I haven't made.
Till you talk to him, you would like to tell you that, okay? That's president. Uh huh. How did you get on agenda last month, President? I questioned that last, that last, that meeting, okay? Because I, you need to be a rough list on that. That's on the agenda, agenda last meeting. Who put you on agenda last meeting then? All I'm trying to do is just re, 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 reiterate over again, a rough list. How to get on agenda, uh, I mean.
Was it on the agenda last meeting?
It was.
A good question, I didn't know anything about.
Last meeting.
Has to be.
Look on the petty cash.
Just do. That's what this is. I, I'll get put on that.
No, sir.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, number three, to me, is a simple fix, you know? Uh, let's let the mayor meet with, uh, chief, assistant chief King, I guess it's a title I would suppose, right now. And he'll have what he want on the agenda as for the next time. Because the mayor said something about veto power. I didn't know the mayor had veto power, uh, as for his, his majority of the council.
The mayor in a city council, mayor, uh, former government, does have veto power, and it can be overcome by a two thirds vote, which would be with seven. Council members would be, it'd be a five, in five votes. I don't think y'all have run into a veto since maybe Mayor McAdams first.
Okay.
Couple of months. I wasn't here at the time.
And, and I think I'm looking back at the statute, um, the right to even veto is not even needed due to it being a violation of, um, the separation of power, correct?
If you're opposed to without our veto, I think it runs caution.
Okay.
All right, well, back to the contract that we did on last meeting. To me, a contract is supposed
Then you will paying somebody to manage it right.
You can have someone that's city employed to manage that bill.
Well, that mean you gotta pay the benefits and all that again. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, we have people already in place.
As far as the cleanup part, like you said, that's that's that comes under day to day operation. So if you wanted to stop employees from going over there cleaning up, that would be your right, I would think. You know, you can do that part. And that mean if she would have to pay somebody to clean it up out of her fees. You know, you can do that part, but the other part is for the contract that the city have entered into with her. I think, you know, it's it's a contract and we've voted on that.
But there's a violation of separation of power.
Well, like you said, man, that's agree to disagree.
Right, so I just I just seek out a digital opinion.
Okay.
Can I say something? Um, Mayor. Now you dismissed her now about a month ago. And y'all knew that. So I think they disrespected you to that agreement. To go over your head with that because that's not right. That's not right at all because somebody else could do that. Like you said, somebody in the city could do it. Why her? Because I had a run in with her Saturday with my classmates. Let me tell you all this. They went to City Car Center. We looked at the car center, looking for daddy prices and everything. She didn't know me from Adam Housecat. Then I heard your name and asked my classmate, what did she say about Cox? Mayor Cox. My classmate said, she said that Mayor Cox didn't like her. I told her this. I said, where you get that from? You never heard him say he didn't like you. So why do you give out that kind of information and you're supposed to be working, doing something for the city? That's not right. That's not acceptable. And I did not like that. And I told her I did not like it. Let me get at this car center right now. I had ten classmates there to look at that. She had no right to say nothing about you dislike her because you never said that to her at all. I'm good with that. I just want everybody to know.
All right, thank you. All right. Anything, we're gonna move on with the agenda. I'll try to make a last statement, but I didn't.
I think we all gotta realize we have a city to run here. And this is not about a power struggle. I'm hearing like a power struggle, you know? These people working together on one accord. We have to move the city forward. We have people that that love Greenwood. Who wanna come back home and move here. They don't wanna see y'all just fussing and fighting. Every meeting we got to disagree on something. It shouldn't be that way. It wasn't designed that way. This time was to move government forward, not to move government backwards. I'm sitting here not like we going back or still forward. We shouldn't be that way. We gotta move forward. That we gonna ma- ma- make this city what it should be. This is a beautiful city here. I love Greenwood. Think about he love Greenwood. So let's not go on this power struggle thing about who got what power in this power. Let's do the best we can to move this city forward by working together as team. That's what it gonna take.
Granted what you've stated, I've shown that I'm willing to work. It's not reciprocated. Um, communication is always stated. It need to be communicated, communicated. There's no communication from the council to the mayor. President, I have the floor, correct?
I didn't give you the floor with anybody, but anyway, if you want it, you can have it. Yes, sir. Go ahead. I did. We've just discussed it.
I agree.
Okay, yeah, well, if you want it, you can have it. I didn't give it to anybody.
I get I give, I risk.
You risk, okay. Okay.
Out of out of the people that came forward for appointments, total fourteen, none of them approved. So that mean over seventy-five percent, we could do some right together. We all do some right. It ain't it ain't easy, but we doing it.
Can you repeat that?
Nine people, fourteen people that were strong for the point. None of them was approved for what?
Only two new. Half of those um reappointed.
I'm not I'm not saying that. I'm just saying.
Seven out of nine was reappointed.
Yeah, right, reappointed, right.
Only two that was new.
Well, I mean, yeah, we getting there, but and I won't say you're not reciprocated, uh, Mayor, because we're trying to. You, as far as the car center, that was your decision to overturn what the council had voted on. And what the council had decided. You decided to make to circumvent that and change and disagree with us. So that was you on that. We just trying to go to our same agreement that we had agreed on some months ago. As far as that center. So you the one changing the the rules on it. Uh, and 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 to me not working with the council on that part. And the other things that we should work together on, uh, then we gonna work together on. But just just the way some things go, I think it's it's and I I say it's on both end. I ain't gonna say it's not reciprocated on one end or on the other. It's on both ends.
So by law. My job is to protect the city of Greenwood.
It's all our job.
So when there's no contract and money is being spent. City taxpayer money being spent without the necessary legal binding information. That puts all of us in jeopardy. There was no contract. There's no contract.
But as of last meeting, now there is one. That's the impression I got, and I might have got it wrong, that you asked for a contract. And the city council to reciprocate what you asked for, did that. Did just that.
I asked for like copper originally, it was already on hand. You created one after I stated it was on contract on. That's not the same thing. Agree to disagree.
Anything that's come from council, we need to move on. Okay. All right, public agenda first, we have Kevin Matthews.
Oh, yes, I'm um I appreciate y'all for letting me speak to the council, city council. Yeah, I'm I'm trying to see who confirmed taking six dollars and fifty cent out of my hourly check. And even, ain't nobody told me that. Number one, when I took the job for the city, I took three.
What he just stuck, I think is he just touched another session?
Yeah, we probably need to do that.
As long as we don't answer and discuss it with him, he can talk. You know, you know, we don't need to get in a discussion with him. Do y'all agree? You know, I don't think we need to get it. We we can always listen.
I think he can present what he wants.
What he wants, but we just don't need to get in a discussion with it. You see what I'm saying?
May I speak to the county attorney?
Yes, go ahead.
While allowing him to state what he's saying without a rebuttal makes it seem like he's been done wrong.
And this is probably, but I ain't got no problem telling you, this is probably something that he needs to.
Because it never it never came across my desk.
We got, I mean, we, that that is day to day operations. Uh, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure, uh, if it was confirmed, it was confirmed by the uh CEO of the city, which is Mayor Cox.
Okay, then, so what what's it?
So that's that's something you and Mayor Cox need to talk about, I'm thinking.
Okay, but we can talk about it now, can't we?
No, I don't think we can talk about it now.
Executive session, talk about it. I I'm willing to. Going to executive session, cuz it need to be discussed.
Ms. Matthew, you can you can come speak with me in tomorrow morning. Uh, we'll make sure that you have everyone in attendance, so we can meet.
All right, I sure appreciate that.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Mr. Demetrius Vida. Is this similar or different?
Good afternoon. For those that may not know me, I am Demetrius Bedell. A little bit about me. I worked for the Greenwood Police Department for many years in various positions. My most noble position is with narcotics where I wrote and served numerous high-risk search warrants while taking on the worst Greenwood has to offer. For the sake of time, by now y'all have had time to review my resume. You may find, you may not find a more qualified person than me that has worked the streets of Greenwood. I stand before you today for the citizens of Greenwood. I have been approached by many citizens expressing their concerns and feelings about being fearful to go outside their homes. Sit on their porch or walk down the street. That you're not able to be able to go outside nor enjoy a day at the park without fear of something happening. That really concerns me. I have watched the crime go up in Greenwood, the city of Greenwood. What really bothered me most was when the young girl got killed with her mother, supposed to be in a safer place in the world. Uh, really bothers me so much because I myself traveled that route along with my granddaughter and what it has no name. So when Mayor Cox asked me whether I'd be willing to come out of retirement to help get the city back under control, I said yes. Now, I do understand that I have a unique problem that goes from the city of Greenwood all the way throughout the Florida county. One, I'm honest. Two, I go by the book. Because you go by the book, you stay within the law, you can't go wrong. Three, I go straight down the middle. That mean I can sleep at night because I did the right thing. Four, I do not care whether you have a million dollars in the bank or two nippers rubbing together. Everyone gets the same treatment. Five, I have not been in any trouble. Six, I do not owe anybody anything. Seven, I do not be in under pressure. Eight, but not least, but last, I cannot be bought. Because I'm free to do the job that's supposed, that's supposed to be done. That is what people fear the most about me. The people know I can and will get the job done. Now, there's been a lot of rumors about my certification, not my qualification, but my certification. So let me expand on. I got certified in law enforcement in nineteen ninety-seven. From the Best Law Enforcement Academy of Mississippi, Maloa, class of one seventy-nine. Our class motto, we face what you fear. Class motto, we face what you fear. Just like a lawyer, a doctor, teacher, or insurance agent with a license or certificate. If you retire or step away from the profession, your license or certificate becomes inactive. When you return to the profession, then your license or certificate can be become active again. So let there be clear about my certification. And at this time, I'm willing to answer any questions or any thoughts that anyone have of me. Because they say they hadn't seen yet the minions, they may ask some questions for me. I'm here to answer anything that you all have.
I have a question. I just wanna say I'm glad to see you. You here today.
Hey, can we have everybody attention now? Mr. Cook, where's Officer Cook?
Right here.
Cook, can you control that crowd, please? Now, the next outburst, we're gonna ask you to leave. Okay?
Let me get back to what I was saying. I've been glad to see you here today. Because some people can get your face with who you are. So I'm glad to see you here. And this gives them opportunity to ask you any question they wanna ask you today.
I'm here. I answer anything they wanna ask. Thank y'all for your time. Thank you for allowing me to speak with y'all today. I know I spoke with y'all individually, so anything that y'all have for me, um, you all have my number. I'm willing to answer any questions that you have.
All right, Mr. Vida, we thank you. Appreciate you, okay? Okay. Number four, policy is the agenda. Number five, the routine items agenda. Any question under the content agenda? Yes, sir.
Number three, president, so typical proven of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Remember, we supposed to talk about what about, cuz we interviewed the brother on the budget. So you put that on that agenda?
No.
You put that on agenda?
No. Saying, we're talking about the C V B?
Number three under the content agenda.
Can I ask you something? Um, I put that on there because last year we missed it on the first meeting in September and I was not gonna miss it this year. So I had my calendar flagged to be sure that it was on this agenda.
We're gonna miss it again, cuz we 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 in green, we having to do the budget though. We just got the budget on Friday. And we're gonna have some budget, budget workshop for the president.
All right, well, speaking of budget workshops, uh, can we do a budget workshop Thursday in the conference room here?
What time you have in mind, President?
What the what the uh? Anytime.
I want to be able to make it Thursday, cuz I have something to do Thursday.
It's morning, yeah.
Okay, well. I still. Yeah, I still said, let's go with Thursday and Ms. Glenn, what we gonna do? We probably gonna have two.
Okay.
Okay, so that's in case somebody can't make it, we'll have another one. Okay, is that all right with everybody? We'll probably have two.
What time?
Y'all wanna do four or five?
We got something going on at five thirty.
Yeah, so y'all wanna do four o'clock Thursday? Four, okay. Four o'clock Thursday. We'll meet in the conference room. Okay. Okay, and you look over your budget, have any question, we'll go.
So, brother, speaking of three, brother, we gonna have to uh type that or remove that.
Uh, okay. All right, uh, so what I would do, I'm gonna read them individually now. All right, uh, number one, approval of the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five city council minutes. And August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five special meetings minutes. Chair entertain a motion.
I make the motion.
Sir.
All right, motion been made and been second. All in favor, right hand. Pose the same sign, motion care. Number two, Dr. Clane, you have any questions?
My president. Last meeting, we left off from Dr. Clane, off off of that last uh meeting had. And I don't know if we add him back, but I can't see him, I had it back to Dr. Clane. But those I had it back to our.
You picked up the copy.
I picked them up.
I don't think that it was ever put back on there to ratify it to the claim days.
But by law, president, we never voted on those. So that mean whatever he on that claim did, we paid already, but never voted on. That can cause a problem.
On that Nicole, when she scanned it, take me, then I scanned it and legal. And so it came out in the letter and so all right, I did not print off. That was the issue with that.
So at some point, we gotta handle that, brother. But that that's already come through the the last city council meeting.
So I guess what we probably need to do is retroact that at the next meeting, put it on the uh. Dr. Clane's at the next meeting, even though it's already paid. We still need to vote on it for the record.
Need for the record.
So Vicki, can you have that included in the next Dr. Clane?
Yes, sir.
Now, one more question. Are are these claims all on here? We don't have, our last one was Mexico typo. I think it printed front, not the back. These all been in in filing, everything, then we look at and file. Thank you, president.
Okay. All right, chair entertain a motion?
I saw a little brother.
Motion been made and been second. All in favor, right hand, please. Pose the same sign, motion care. Certificate, certificate, certificate of approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Chair entertain a motion uh to table that, certificate of approval. All right. Uh, been made and motion to table that until a further date. We don't know a date yet, but it'll be soon. And I guess we need to let Kevin know and all that. There would not be a public uh budget here uh Thursday.
Okay, my president. Did we have one schedule, president?
I saw it in the paper.
Who scheduled a budget here then without looking at the budget?
You had to have approved budget, right, for a budget here.
Approved budget for your grandpa. All right, thanks, president.
Okay, all right, all in favor, table this till further day? Motion care. Routine items agenda, number one, ordinance providing for the levy of collection of taxes. Upon all real mixed and personal property within the corporate limits of the city of Greenwood. The Florida County, Mississippi, for the year twenty twenty-five and the adoption of the twenty twenty-five tax rolls. Motion been made and been second, any further? All in favor, right hand, please. Pose the same sign, motion care. Number two, a resolution approving fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget for the Greenwood Convention and Business Bureau. All right, been made and second, all in favor, right hand. Pose the same sign, motion care. Number three, resolution approving the bonding. Well. That would be tabled or, number three, we tabling. Mayor's request.
Okay, we can table, we take it off until we get a reward for that.
Okay, well, so we won't even vote on that. So we just take it off?
Let's take it off. Yeah, we both take it off already, president?
That's the consent of the council, just not to vote on it here. Don't table it or anything, let the mayor come back with his decision on that.
Yes.
Okay, all right, number four is a N A. I mean, number three, I'm sorry. Okay. Four, resolution in supporting reviving the youth ministry and its mission. Endorsing this application for the twenty twenty-five USDA housing preservation grant. Motion been made and been second, all in favor, right hand. Pose the same sign, motion care. Number five, a resolution of the mail in the city council of Greenwood, Mississippi. Authorizing and acknowledging the Florida County, Mississippi, as one of the owners of the Greenwood LaFlore Hospital. To enter into a loan with the Mississippi Development Bank. In a principal amount not to exceed eight million dollars. In order to refund the bank, ten million special obligation bond series. Twenty twenty-three dated July fifth, twenty twenty-three. Which were issued to provide working capital for the hospital and its related purposes. Uh, Trey Edens is here? Trey Harrison. I know Trey Harrison, mister, is he up to explain that to? Welcome, Trey.
Thank you, Mayor Cox, President Stevenson, uh, ladies and gentlemen, the council. Trey Harrison, Butler Snow. This is a refinancing resolution. The goal of this particular resolution is actually to um lower the interest rate. On the debt that the county issued in twenty twenty-three. The county issued that debt, which um was a countywide uh tax. And uh what they did was a lot line of credit for the hospital. The hospital only drew on seven point five million. Um, ten million was authorized, so what the county wants to do now is um save taxpayer money. To lock that in back at the seven point five, get a lower interest rate and lower the term. And so as one of the owners of the hospital, this resolution would acknowledge that borrowing. And allow the county to try to lower that interest rate.
My president.
Yes, sir.
Had the county talked about it already, cuz I I think the county had any discussions yet.
Uh, uh, Councilman McCoy, yes, they have, actually, they engaged us. Actually, it was last year when we began looking at this. And then they approved and authorized a parameters resolution. Development Bank has also approved uh parameters documents. And so now, uh, we're before the city. So they multiple conversations, multiple meetings. And I can provide you and and the council with minutes to 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 show that they had plenty of discussions.
I match one question. Two thousand twenty-three, I don't remember wanting to receive here. I know we came down and we voted as as a joint agreement, you know? I don't remember the the city borrowing any money at all in the county that I would borrow.
You're correct. You're correct. This, as a joint owner of the hospital. Um, essentially, the county is is authorized to put on the millage. Which wouldn't affect the city as well. So as a countywide millage, citizens of the city. Would be paying that millage as well as those outside the city of Greenwood as well. But given that under the Community Hospital Act, the city is a joint owner. Um, this resolution is acknowledging the, not only did you acknowledge the initial borrowing in twenty twenty-three. This would essentially acknowledge that they're trying to lower the interest rate as well. Because we don't wanna do anything without the consent of one of the owners.
So are we borrowing eight million or the county borrowing eight million?
The county is borrowing.
They they just not saying clear. It's not clear, it's saying the city borrowed at eight million dollars to refund, refund the bank of the ten million dollars, we're saying.
We can make that clear.
It's not clear on here. Well, it's looking now, it's saying that 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 the city is borrowing eight million dollars. In order to refund um fund the bank of of the ten million dollars.
We can, we can certainly make that clear.
President. I just say, um, when I was visiting, county talks during this time, borrowed this money. And the city also involved uh giving access to the hospital, to uh money, caring money, helping to spend in different ways. First, they have some children and garbage on it, right, and water. So and then borrowed this money, gone to the bank, and paid back uh million. So I was I was under impression that the million would be charged to county, not the city.
That's correct. You're you're correct.
Okay.
All this resolution is uh attempting to do, and we can certainly make it clear. Uh, is trying to get the acknowledgement of the city as one of the owners. That the county is trying to move forward with lowering the interest rate to save taxpayer money. Um, that's the sole purpose of it. We don't want to do anything without the consent of the city as one of joint owners.
And Mr. McCoy, the council did pass a similar resolution back in July of twenty thirty. Again, and I think it does say it, authorizing and acknowledging, not the city borrowing.
And what we got for now is it's saying that the city's borrowing eight million dollars to refund the bank of the ten million dollars. Look only, uh, it's in there black and white. That was that 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 was my question I had, uh, Charlie.
It's authorizing, acknowledging the county to. To enter into a loan for the eight million, not the city.
Okay.
Right.
We're good. Trey's not trying to stick us with.
We will make it very, very, very.
Make it clear, I'm saying.
Uh, yes, it is the debt of the county. And um, again, we just wanna make sure we have the consent of one of the owners. Being the the this particular body, the mayor and city council.
No problem. Thank you, then. For making it, making that clear, Charlie.
Absolutely.
Okay. If our hearts are clear on this, chair entertain a motion?
I saw a little brother there.
Motion been made and been second, any further? All in favor, right hand, please. Pose the same sign, motion care. Thank you, Mr. F. Okay. Okay, number six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Greenwood, Mississippi. Approving the acceptance of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration for Airport Improvement Project. Y'all see the number Greenwood LaFlore Airport, approving the city matching share. Authorizing the mail to execute grant documents and for related purposes. All right, gentlemen, how y'all doing? Good.
This is Mr. Mike Servant, who is chairman of the. Uh, there actually two resolutions here, and I'd like to address both of those in one item. Link to directly together. Uh, the project that we're discussing is called the rehabilitation of runway one eight three six. Which is a primary north-south runway. Uh, it's in a state where it needs rebuild, pretty much like overlay and paving the street. Some of the ways on, we down on highway seven reason these have a little bit of old traffic. Uh, it's gonna involve knitting about two and a half inches of asphalt. All season, working on cracks and underwood remaining and then two left, you know, asphalt. Uh, you know, it is pretty expensive product. The grants are coming from the Federal Aviation Administration. And a little bit about that, FAA purely provided wanted the airport of all sizes. Uh, basically, the cover things, which could probably be the best described as. Thanks affecting the movement of airplanes. They don't tend to say no.